All righty, good evening, good evening. We'll go ahead and get things started. You got the sign up, Barbie? The speakers sign ups? Yeah, we'll keep it on schedule. All righty, good evening, good evening. We have a bit of a protracted meeting tonight, but we'll get into that in a second. So let's just go ahead and kick off our opening ceremonies for this protracted meeting on October 12th, 2025. And just for clarification, tonight, we do not have a quorum, so this will not actually be a Board of Commissioners meeting because we do not have a quorum. As you can see, three of our commissioners are missing this evening, and that prohibits us from doing any actual legal business. So this evening's meeting will be primarily informational. We have a great presentation about our downtown master plan that we'll be seeing tonight, but there will be no votes this evening, unfortunately. Exactly. So we have a bit of a protracted agenda. Tonight, we'll be doing our regular opening ceremonies. We'll do public comments from there, and then we have some recognitions, and then on top of that, a couple of presentations, as well as a presentation of our downtown master plan. So there will be a lot of great information tonight, but I do apologize, we will not be voting on anything at this point, mainly because we do not have a quorum. So it's not a legal board meeting tonight. So stay tuned for questions and answers. We're going to try and go through some presentations, and we'll be here for Q and A afterwards. Again, because it's not an official meeting, we can kind of, you know, flex things a little bit, and I think we're going to end it with a Q and A. So if everybody wants to stick around till the end, we'll be here to answer any questions you may have, either to me or to our other two commissioners who are here this evening. All righty, well, let's go ahead and kick things off with our typical opening ceremony. So I'd invite you to rise and give a moment of silence for thanks and praise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, so as promised, we will still have general public comments. I know a lot of folks took the time and the effort to get here this evening, so we will continue with our public comments and as normal. So we'll start off with Mr. Daniel Philip Bautote. My goal is to be 80% correct, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board members. Limited government, stable growth, stable taxes, commitment to community. I watched the full four-hour budget resolution meeting on June 24th. I dare say that I was appalled by the gamesmanship that took place that night. In short, the board missed all the benchmarks for a reasonable budget decision. Four comments in particular, I think, are worthy of note. One commissioner insisted that the budget vote should be unanimous, and yet would not offer up a resolution for a vote. Another commissioner stated that they needed the increase in their stipend. This commissioner should have been recused from voting on the budget, period. And for the mayor's outrage and his comments, I feel your pain. This budget has capped off a $15 million increase in the town budget over the past seven years. The residents of Waxahaw deserve better. The residents of Waxahaw can only conclude that this board, as it is currently configured, is incapable of passing a reasonable budget on their behalf. There is, however, a reckoning that's coming on November 4th this year, and I urge all residents of Waxahaw to get out to vote and vote for Waxahaw Wall-supported candidates. But I also have some solutions I hope that at some point you will consider. I urge you to add a citizens' budget advisory committee that can assist in developing the budget. This would help to bring ownership to the citizens and the people who pay for the budget. I also urge that you add one more member to the board to balance the voting blocks. Pledge a resolution to reduce the budget across the board by 4% each year over the next six years. Find ways to get out from under this $30 million-plus town hall, which is costing residents 2.5 million per year. Be creative, think out of the box. That is your job. The expense of this town hall will forever be the bane of every budget that you consider going forward. If you can approve expenditures, you should be able to approve savings. Think private-public partnerships. If there are any underutilized spaces in this building, find ways to monetize them on behalf of the residents. In closing, I want to say to the board, get your stuff together and stop the budget insanity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I believe we have an email that's next. Would you like to read that into the record, Barbie?
Yes, sir. I received an email statement from Melanie Shipley, and it states, "Hello, BOC. I attended the last BOC meeting due to concerns about the rezoning of the Olivia project. There was clearly a great deal of concern about the impact of these large apartment complexes being built in Waxahaw and its impact on traffic and town infrastructure. I wanted to express my concern as well and ask that the BOC at least delay approval of this rezoning until the current six development projects are completed and that impact of those is known. It seems wise to delay or deny any further development for the time being. The support against the rezoning was as strong that it would seem unsensible for you who are elected to represent the real, the will of the people to vote for rezoning. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Barbie. Next up, we have Judith Davis.
Three minutes. Hello.
Uh-oh, she's in serious mood.
It's just general in nature, general in nature. A little boy, six-year-old boy named Mr. Huntley, Brian Huntley, spotted a train on the tracks yesterday, and he told his mother, I believe, I could be wrong with the details. She got ahold of CSX, and they got the train stopped just in time before it hit the tree. So, small-town hero. And it was on the news twice today.
Outstanding. It's nice to know people are looking out for our trail, our rail tracks. Next up is Lisa Lisi.
Well, I want to say I was prepared to make a comment, thinking we were going to be voting on the rezoning of Olivia, so I'm going to continue with that because I prepared to do that. It's just disappointing to see that we have these empty seats, but I'm going to proceed. I'd like to open with God's Word. It is written in Proverbs 16, verse 9. "A man plans his way, but the Lord directs his steps." And I pray for unity and conviction when it comes to making a decision with the rezoning of Olivia. I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the Board of Commissioners for this time to speak. My name is Lisa Lisi. I reside here with my family within city limits of Waxahaw. None of this makes any sense to me. I don't know what the ultimate goal is here for Waxahaw. I do know the value and safety of our community is at hand. I ask this board to decline when we vote on the rezoning request for Project Olivia. If this gets approved, it will add to the chaos of our town. More isn't always better. When rezoning is considered, the safety of our roadways and quality of the Waxahaw residents should be primary focus. We don't need any more high-density housing. This isn't the answer. It's adding to our already overcrowded roads, schools, and quality of life, increasing costs of vital services, which falls on the taxpayers of Waxahaw. Waxahaw is charted the oldest town known for its great history and a destination for antique collectors. We have had massive growth within the past decade. With this being said, we are destroying the landscape and history of beautiful Waxahaw. I ask, please vote against the rezoning for this Project Olivia. And lastly, N16 is already overburdened. It's the main road in and out of the town of Waxahaw. We have all our stores of necessity off of 16. If rezoning of Olivia is approved, these 315 multifamily units will have a greater mass of traffic pouring onto Providence, causing an even higher risk of accidents during daily commutes and transportation, making our roadways a hazard to all traveling day-to-day. Waxahaw is a little under 12 square miles. Everyone can't live in one town. The need to move on is necessary. We could still preserve some of what's left, and I ask the board to deny once again the rezoning requests for Project Olivia. Vote no for this rezoning when we vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next up, Mr. Jeff Carroll.
I don't have to follow that, just to let you know. Everything she just said, she must have found my piece of paper, I don't know. It is, she feels exactly how I feel. I'm probably one of the few people that grew up here. How long y'all been here? I bought a coffee grinder in 1989, the year my son was born. At Farmhouse Antiques on Main Street. And the reason I bought it, it was bought in 1909 on my birthday. So I still have that grinder sitting in my den with the receipt still in it. That's my memories of downtown Waxahaw. So I've been here all these years, and I've watched everything look the same for many, many years. Love coming into downtown, eating at the restaurants. It seems like about six years ago it all changed when the previous mayor came in and the three here and three others that went here. Things started changing quickly with high-density growth, and I was seeing things happening. I was not involved. I would just sit at home like most people do, thinking everything's doing right as usual. But as you see these changes, it just hurts seeing, I'll tell you what happened. I saw this Olivia sign go up, this public hearing. We were on our way to eat dinner just this few weeks ago. Y'all saw the little sign, "Public Hearing," very small, stayed out there about five days. That's it. And outside that, that's the only thing you saw in this town to stop Olivia or even educate us about Olivia. So I go home, telling my wife, I said, "Come on, we've got to go out. I'm going to show you something." We did that. I drove her through Blythe Mill. I said, "I want to show you what else is messed up here in this town." I drove her through Blythe Mill, behind the farmer's market. I said, "A fire truck can't even drive through here if there is an emergency. The whole thing don't make sense, not even where it's at. I hate this town hall, just letting you know. It's too big. It should have been over there where the farmer's market is." But I went and got her, we rode around, showed her a few things, and I says, "I don't understand what's going on here, why everything's kind of quiet. Developers always get their way here for some reason, and I'm just tired of it. I just want it to stop where we are. We can't change this. I don't know my math well on this one, but I think there's 14 projects that the previous mayor passed with this three others and three spinoffs, but they have passed 14 more projects that y'all don't even know about in this town that haven't even broke ground, high-density townhomes with over 4,000 units involved in this. You don't even know about it yet, but it's coming. But I'm not afraid of that. I mean, I still love this town. I grew up here. You just got to set what somebody messed up. We just got to set what it is. It's just time to stop where we are, and I'm sorry for anybody with Olivia, but we've got to stop now. For my family, I've got four generations on my farm, and sorry, me looking at my family and knowing my towns. What I love is deteriorating around us, but if we stop now and just say no to Olivia, no more high-density, I'm not, if you want to build a house, build a house. Build a house on two, you know what I'm saying, on acre. Let the kids play kickball like we used to, and I thank you for everything that you said. I can't say nothing else.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Next up, Jared Bard.
Good evening. I'd like to echo what's already been said. The last two speakers, I thought, said it very well and echo exactly how I feel. I want to be on the record strongly opposing the rezoning for the Olivia project. I was born and raised in Charlotte, South Charlotte area, and my wife and I have four young children, and we chose to buy land in Waxahaw about five years ago because we loved the quaint, quiet community, the country, the peace and quiet that was out here. And we built a house and moved out here so our kids could have space and play, and as soon as we move out here, things like this start happening. And I just want to say, if this gets approved, what's next? There'll be something else on the agenda, and these developers will not stop until every piece of property in all of Waxahaw has been gobbled up, and there's apartments in town, homes everywhere, and the current infrastructure just cannot handle any more growth, especially this type of growth. So I strongly oppose it and would like to see this. I wish it would be voted on tonight, but unfortunately, it won't be. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Jordan Ben.
Good evening, everybody. I've only got three minutes to screw this up. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jordan Ben, and I'm running for Waxahaw Town Commissioner. I was born and raised in the Carolinas, New York, South Carolina, right across the state line, and I've always valued the kind of community where people know their neighbors and show up for one another. That's exactly what my family and I found here in Waxahaw. We chose this lovely city because of its unique small-town character, its strong sense of community, and the feeling that this is a place where people care. I'm a husband, a father, a youth soccer coach, and your neighbor. And now, I'm stepping up because I want to protect what makes Waxahaw special while thoughtfully shaping its future as we grow and progress. Over and over, we've heard that Waxahaw is growing, but the data shows how dramatic it is. Between 2013 and 2023, our population increased by about 103%, more than doubling in just 10 years. That kind of growth isn't just a talking point. It brings real pressing challenges, as we've all seen. We're already facing crowded schools, infrastructure stretched thin, and daily frustration with traffic, and we can expect more strain if we keep growing so recklessly. Obviously, I am also against the Olivia development going through. From what I've seen and gathered, though, it's clear that there's division on the board, and I'm not here to assign blame, but these stubborn arguments are hindering progress. We need more balance, more mutual respect, and more meaningful collaboration. I'm running to help bridge the divide by listening, building trust, and ensuring that diverse perspectives have a seat at the table so that everyone in Waxahaw can feel seen and heard. I care deeply, I'm here to serve, and I'm ready to lead with humility and purpose. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Ben. Next up, we have Joe Lapos.
Great, thanks. Hi, Joe Lapos, I live over by Waxahaw Elementary, and I'm going to start off like Lisa did with the Bible verse says. Proverbs 12:19 says, "Truthful words stand the test of time, but lies are ultimately exposed." Interesting, we got three seats here. I think this will be the first time in four years where we're not going to hear a bunch of lies. It's just been unbelievable what's happened here in this town. I moved over to Waxahaw Elementary from Valhalla Farms because we wanted to get away from the traffic. We moved into a spot where every house around us is R1 zone. Now, five years later, seven years later since we moved there, every house around us is now zoned anywhere between R3 and R6. So there's going to be about 2,000 homes built around Waxahaw Elementary School. Most of you don't know that, but it's coming. All of it was approved by them, and the former mayor, Pappas, all got together, connived, and put these things together, and here they are, continuing the conniving again, which is why they're not here at the moment. So, but I just wanted to mention something. I exposed something several years ago, we're talking about the bypass. Over in one particular place, they said these developers are going to build a bypass and they're going to pay for it. When we looked at the plans, it became fairly obvious right away that the only thing that they were going to build was a single-lane road that runs in between the new development that they're putting in. Nothing else for it. So in the past few weeks, Rogers Pond, which is one of the points that is on the South Parkway, which will connect to this East Parkway, which is what we're building over here with Olivia, they have put in a single-lane road, and they're not even putting in a left-hand turn lane, they're not even putting in a right-hand turn lane, just a single lone layer, but they're going to leave enough room to add the ultimate four lanes that were proposed by Krypto and that they said that they were going to take care of and that the developers were going to do. They're putting in a lousy two lanes and nothing else, nothing else to exit out. I've seen the report, and they knew exactly what this was, and they've now gone ahead and planned it. So when they add the other 900 houses, that bypass slash now Parkway slash piddly little road is going to be nothing more than a road that's there for that neighborhood and nothing else. They've done the same thing, designed over for Emerson, and here we are coming into Olivia, the same exact design. We're not putting in anything else. You've heard Blair talk over here, for those who were there, says, "We just want you to add a lousy 300 feet to pay for a little bit of the Parkway." And Ty Par said, "No, we don't want to do that." Ty Par and the folks that were there on the staff completely ignored our planning board, which said, "Everything about this plan for this thing is wrong." Yet they're ready to vote for it, and that's why they're not here right now. Folks, this is what we're dealing with. Make sure we vote this out. Make sure we vote in point, the wall point 2.0, because we've got to have more people that are going to listen to us and not lie to us over and over again. And by the way, there's some other things. I know I've got a little bit of time. Go look at North Providence Road. Perfect aisle spot that you could take and run along there and put a connection to the East Parkway. So what do they do? Instead, they put in some lousy apartments and roads that are not even passable that can go there. So nobody can pass through those apartments that can get to the Parkway. Instead, they're going to dump out on Blythe Mill, where it's already crowded, where it's already impossible to make a left-hand turn, and then we'll have yet another left-hand turn to do the same thing. It's like, why do they not make any sense? It just keeps going on and on, and I think that means I got to go. But, but it's, no quorum, so.
All righty, next up, we have Erin Muldoon.
Good evening. My name's Erin Muldoon. I think that we can all see what's going on here. The three holdover commissioners have once again given the proverbial finger to the residents of Waxahaw. They're not brave enough to show up and hear the opposition to the Olivia project and all that they would face, so they chose to sit it out, and it makes me wonder why. Again, choosing developers over residents. We have spoken in large numbers against this, and if you take note or watch meetings, there's never a large group who support these projects, just many who oppose. And when you think about what's happened here, tonight, they're actually getting paid to be no-shows. We pay them to do this. And if this doesn't show you the disrespect they feel for all of us, I don't know what will. I find it particularly hilarious, and I say that with all the sarcasm in my body, that one commissioner in particular consistently voiced her tagline to "build bridges and not walls" as a shot at the wall, and yet here, tonight, she burned that bridge. So remember this feeling and the disrespect they've shown, and yet demand respect when they sit at that dais. They are a disgrace. We deserve better. Vote the wall in November.
Thank you, Ms. Muldoon. Next up, we have Mike Deilio.
You have to forgive me, I forgot my glasses, so this might be fun. Good evening, Mayor Murray, Commissioner Daunt, and Commissioner Wedra. Tonight, three commissioners are not present to do the business of the people of Waxahaw by denying quorum. They know that just one of their absences gives Mayor Murray, Commissioner Daunt, and Commissioner Wedra a majority, proving a point they will never relinquish that power. Even though they're not running for reelection, make no mistake, they do not plan on giving up control. Just look at the candidates they'll be backing, and you'll see they're not supporting us. I'm Mike Deilio, along with Dan Ferris and John Gemignani. Together, we are the Waxahaw Wall 2.0, and we're running to fill these seats and give the will of the people a majority of the Waxahaw Board of Commissioners. You'll never be disrespected, and if we're given the privilege to serve the citizens of Waxahaw, we will deliver. We won't let you down. So please visit thewaxawwall.com to learn more about our movement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Next up, we have Wendy Burke.
Yeah, I'm definitely not running for anything. And I did have comments about Olivia, but obviously, that's not relevant tonight. But I still want to point out that I think most of us in this room share the same thoughts and feelings, but I could be very wrong. There is obviously a huge imbalance between residential and commercial business in our town. You see it every day. All you have to do is drive around, drive in one of the housing developments. You can just sense it. You can feel it. I know that people complain about traffic, but I don't really think that that's the problem. I think it's the planning of the infrastructure that needs to be addressed. I would love to see us hold all decisions on, or at least hold on approving, all future residential developments for now until we see how the impact of the 4,000 new homes has on our community, and then take a look at the infrastructure and the things that we can do that are going to be better decisions going forward. I know that you, I noticed tonight, and I was not aware, that you do have a partner for the plan for the town of Waxaw. So there is a, I guess, a town plan that's being worked on. We definitely want to look at that and make some input on it because we've been talking about that ourselves for a long time, that we thought that was lacking. But it would be nice if there was a whole town plan, meaning if we talked about when the taxes are in better balance, that are more sustainable, and the town has more income to support amenities that are, that would better support the type of community that we want. And that's the type of community that supports parks, outdoor, you know, activities, things that enhance and enrich the community, not necessarily more housing developments. So that's my thought. Thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have, I think this is Jody Ruth Hoffman? Did I get that right? Jody Ruth? No? Okay. Scratching that. All righty. And that concludes tonight's public comments. I just wanted to make one comment at the beginning of this meeting, just so folks understand where we are and how we got here a little bit. First and foremost, according to the North Carolina general statutes, a quorum is the minimum number of members required to be present at a meeting to make that meeting legally valid. So we need a quorum. Well, what is a quorum? As defined by the North Carolina general statutes, a quorum is a majority of the voting members plus the mayor. As you can see, a majority of the voting members are not present, in spite of the presence of the mayor. So how did this come about? I left for vacation on October 1, and around that time, I caught, August 1? What did I say? Geez, I don't even know what day it is. Anyway, I went on vacation on October 1. I did it again. I'm wishing the time away. Is it Halloween yet? Anyway, on August 1, I left for vacation and caught wind of the fact that the Representatives of the Olivia Project were requesting a deferment. And I was curious as to why they would suddenly want to defer. I said, "There's no point in deferring. It's on the schedule for the 12th. Let's leave it on the 12th." Well, the agenda for the 12th was published last Thursday. On that same day, I was informed that one of the Commissioners would not be available to attend. It was interesting. So we thought, okay, that's a funny coincidence. Why is it that a project would be deferred, and then one of the Commissioners wouldn't be able to attend? That seems an odd mix. Well, it became clear a couple days later, when on Monday, another Commissioner dropped out, and then finally, this morning, the third and final Commissioner dropped out as well. Why is this? It's a strange connection in that a Commissioner would drop out as soon as the agenda was made clear that something that was requested to be removed from the agenda wasn't actually removed. So it was a strange series of coincidences. One could use the word collusion, but it just might be a funny coincidence. I know in two weeks, there's likely to be some statements made by some folks on the board about not knowing how they're going to vote, and they hadn't decided yet on how to vote. But I think the majority of us in this room can guess with a high level of precision how they would vote, and how they were intending on voting, and how one absence lost them the majority so they would all be absent. I think that that was perfectly clear, and it was made clear by the fact that the project requested a deferment at around the same time we knew one of the Commissioners wouldn't be present. So the connection between those two events was very suspicious, and the subsequent events with the other two Commissioners dropping out kind of confirmed some of those suspicions. So I'm going to get a lot of heat from the other three, and they will make comments in a couple of weeks. But actions speak louder than words. And we have tonight's actions and the actions of the last five days to sort of prove where things are at.
And before we start with the presentations, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming. And I know, I know that I've been hearing the frustrations of everyone. It doesn't make a difference. And why are we going to come? And the decision is made. But it really is important that everybody be here and that you're engaged. We're listening. Commissioners McMillan, Weslick, and Hall knew you'd be here tonight and hope that by not showing up, they could silence your voices and cause the meeting to be canceled. Although we have heard from you tonight, and we so appreciate it, you really have no idea how much we appreciate it, they need to hear from you at the next regular meeting. They can't cower forever. And I would like you to remind them what Ronald Reagan once said in a tenant that I served by, "We, the people, tell the government what to do. They do not tell us."
Yeah, just to echo their comments, I believe that there are people who did not want to face all of you tonight, and they wanted to defer the vote on the Olivia project. I saw no reason for that, and the mayor didn't either. Unfortunately, we have three Commissioners who have not shown up. We cannot have the vote. But I would hope that everybody would come for the vote at the next meeting, even though you've been disappointed tonight. Show them that you will show up for the next meeting as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we'll go ahead and move forward with our recognition. I believe Rosie, you have an intern that you'd like to recognize this evening. And then we'll move into presentations. We do have some good presentations, so if you'd like to stick around for those, please do.
Okay. So, good evening, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Rosie Dodd, the Finance Director. And tonight, I'd like to introduce and recognize Rithik Cassaretti. He is interested in finance, and so he has been with us upstairs, oh, for a couple weeks now, and he'll be here a little bit longer. Just a little bit about Rithik. He is a rising senior at Marvin Ridge High School with a strong interest in finance. He's led both the Finance Club and DECA Chapter, which has helped him build leadership, teamwork, and problem-solving skills. He has enjoyed giving back to the community by volunteering at the Union County Southwest Library. And he's passionate about pursuing a career in finance, investment, banking, or consulting. And so I'll tell you, he's had quite a bit of exposure upstairs. We've been keeping him busy, following us around and talking to him and explaining to him all the things that go on in finance. So if you'd like to just...
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm Rithik, and I'd like to say that I just love working with the Finance Department, Ally, Christina, Dina, and of course, Rosie. And I just had an amazing time working here.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rithik. It's nice to know that we can help some of our young students who aspire to work in some of the areas that we have here for the town. So it's good to see. Next up, I would like to invite Robin Vire on the Great Trails Grant Award.
Hello. Let me put this up here. I'm Robin Vire. I'm the Deputy of Admin for Parks and Recreation, and I'm here to let you guys have an update on our Great Trails State Grant application. Just a friendly reminder of the details of this. We came to you in the fall with this application. It's through the Great Trails State Program. We applied for a $250,000 grant for the Prescott Trail Bridge Connector. The total estimated project cost is around $500,000. So just wanted to let you guys know that we did get this award, and so we are now going to receive this $250,000 grant. So it's been a great team effort to get this done. Just to kind of let you know with the reminder of the location, this is our Prescott Bridge Connector. So basically, this is going to connect the Prescott Residential to the Prescott Commercial. What's great about this is this is a vital connection for us. So we will actually be able to, we have the Carolina Thread Trail Grant. That project's going to be happening this year, and that's going to be our Town Creek Park Connector to Mill Bridge. So with this bridge, we'll actually be able to get from our Suspension Bridge Trail all the way to Highway 16 once these projects are done. So it's great, huge for our trail system and also for the Carolina Thread Trail Program, the regional network of trails. We don't have an estimate, we don't have our, you know, timeline yet. We're just getting the details of it. We're going to be putting this on our CIP, the $250,000 that was approved for the CIP for the 2026-2027, so fiscal year '27. We're going to be putting that on there. But we're really excited about it, so we just wanted to announce this award. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much, Robin.
Thank you.
All righty. Ashley Knoll, you have an impact report for us.
Okay. Hi, guys. I am Ashley Knoll. I'm the Business Development Director for the town of Waxaw. I also serve as the Executive Director for the Downtown Waxaw Association, a public-private partnership that we have to maintain our Main Street program here in town. So I'd like to invite up our President and Vice President of the Downtown Waxaw Association to join me in giving this presentation. So Kate and Dan, come join. So I want to introduce the two of these great volunteers before we start our presentation. So Kate is actually a Downtown Waxaw champion. She was recognized by the state of North Carolina in 2022 for her work in helping getting this nonprofit organization started. She's been involved with the Main Street Advisory Board and now the Downtown Waxaw Association for the last five years, and lived in Waxaw for basically forever. She's been here for about 50 years. She was Chair of the Barnes Park Project back in 1997, when we, when they first built the David Barnes Park in downtown Waxaw. She also owns a local business here in the area, too. And then we have Dan Garrett. He is the President of the Downtown Waxaw Association. He's lived in Waxaw for four years now, but has been coming to the area to visit his family since 2010. He's a retired hospital pharmacy director from Asheville, and he's involved, he was involved in nonprofits in Asheville, as well as being the Executive Director of the North Carolina Association of Pharmacists. And so we're really excited to get him involved in this organization because of his experience in the nonprofit field. He also worked with the American Pharmacy Association Foundation that replicated the Asheville Project nationwide. And if you don't know what that is, talk to Dan, and he can give you a great explanation of how he got that project started in the Asheville area. So I will turn it over to Kate to let her get started on the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Wedra, Commissioner Daunt, for allowing us to present this program to you. We're excited about Downtown Waxaw Association. And I have, it's been a, oh, I even get to push the button. That's exciting.
Push it carefully. It's got a mind of its own.
Okay. Good to know. My right page here. First of all, I want to just introduce the Downtown Waxaw Association and all of the members. Anybody that's on the Waxaw Association, could you guys stand just so people can see you? Dan Garrett, Jim Hill, and Rick is the owner of... Yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you. We are all volunteers on the association, so all of our board members are volunteers. And it's exciting because we have community volunteers, downtown business owners, downtown property owners, and two Commissioners, and the Town Manager, our new Town Manager. We're excited to have him join us. And they are the people that make up our board. We're excited to be a part of the Downtown Waxaw Association and supporting downtown. And what our program is, do I just push the... Arrow. We're a quasi-public-private partnership. And what that means is that we get the best of both worlds, that we are supported by the town. So the Town Manager is over Ashley, who's the Business Development Department. And the Board of Commissioners is over the Downtown Waxaw Association. And then we have four different parts of our program, organization, which is the Downtown Waxaw Association, the promotion, design, and economic vitality. And all of these committees are made up by volunteers in Waxaw. So if anybody's interested in being involved in helping the Downtown Waxaw Association, please join our committees. We'll take, Ashley will start taking names. The benefits of a quasi-public-private partnership are that the structure reduces the burden on the municipality, so it's not all on the town to support the Downtown Waxaw Association. And we get a buy-in from the community and downtown stakeholders, and it allows us increased flexibility for promotion of downtown. And we can raise funds for different projects that we have, and we have several really exciting things coming up, and we're able to raise funds for that, and it doesn't put a tax on the town. What is Main Street? Main Street is strengthening communities through preservation-based economic development in historic downtown. I've lived here, like Ashley said, over 50 years. So I have seen Waxaw go from no lights and one little restaurant and boarded-up stores to a thriving, wonderful downtown that we have now with lots of restaurants, lots of shopping, lots of things to do, a great Parks Rec Department. When I helped with the David Barnes Park, we didn't have Parks and Rec Department. It was just me and about five or six other volunteers and said, "We would love to put a park there." And they said, "We've got this land." So we said, "Okay." So we helped raise funds for that and did pennies for the park from the elementary school and helped raise funds around that in order to get the park there. And that was just the beginning of the ball rolling, which is exciting. The other part of Main Street is, it was started in 1980. And one of the reasons it was started was because malls were being developed, and all downtowns around the country were all shutting down, and people were moving to malls. And so there were a group of people that got together and started the Main Street program across America and created a four-point approach to revitalize districts. And now, we have work in more than 2,000 communities across the country, and North Carolina itself has 80 North Carolina or Main Street programs. We're also listed on the Historic District on the National Registry, which is a really exciting thing. Our Main Street four-point approach is economic vitality, and that helps businesses develop recruitment and retention of businesses and business-friendly environment. In Waxaw, we're excited because we're full, and we need more space. We don't have any empty businesses like we've had in the past. And because Ashley's doing such a fantastic job, and this is a great place to own a business. And we also have a Design Committee that helps develop the space and... dining, and entertainment, and helps to, to promote programs that we're going to start putting on in this next year. Organization is what the, is the DWA, so we help organize the other three programs. And our mission and vision for the Downtown Waxaw Association is Downtown Waxaw with its small-town charm is the cultural and economic center of the community. It's the premier destination in Union County to experience genuine craftsmanship, create shared memories, and build economic opportunities. And our mission is, the mission of DWA is to be the leading resource to preserve, promote, and bridge the past, present, and future of Downtown Waxaw. Downtown Waxaw is part of the state and national recognition, and we are part of Main Street America, and we have been accredited again in 2025. And one of the things that they, or, this is the list of the things that they look at that we're assessed each year by, and we have a Board of Directors, a full-time staff member, Ashley, mission and vision and economic development strategies, we have work plans, a budget, and support municipality, and then we have a yearly site visit from North Carolina's Main Street. And he comes and assesses what we're doing and gives, and, and we give him our impact statistics, and he is so impressed with us, which is really exciting, especially since we spend a lot of time coming up with ideas as far as how, how to develop Downtown Waxaw and make it a great place. So the awards that we've received since 2022 are the Best Adaptive Reuse for the Mule Barn Mercantile Building, Best Healthy Community Initiative for the East-North Main Street Plaza Project, and the Best Outdoor Space Improvement for our Downtown Park, which I think we could all agree is fantastic. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. So I'll go through some of our impact statistics just over the last year. So as Kate mentioned, as a part of the Main Street Program, each year we have to report back to the State Department of Commerce, who then reports those stats to the Main Street America Organization on just work that we've done over the last year. So, and these statistics are also available in our annual report. That will be online on our website tomorrow morning. So, over the last year, this is July 20, or July 1st, 2024, to June 30th, 2025, we saw 12 building rehabs, one facade improvement, three public improvement projects, public investment of over $700,000, and a private investment of 1.3 million. And that's a total investment of over $2 million in our downtown district over the last year. We've had six new businesses open. That accounts for 36 net new jobs that were created in the downtown district in the last year. We had one business that expanded, and then as Kate mentioned, we have a 0% vacancy rate. We keep a list of all the businesses interested in coming to downtown. We have more than 80 on that list right now. We are working on refining that list to see kind of where our businesses are at in their stages. Are they ready to open right now? Do they have funding? Do they have business plans? But really making sure that our entrepreneurs that are coming to Waxaw have the support they need and can open when spaces do come available. One of the most exciting things over the last year, we had tracked over 950 volunteer hours, and the donated time is worth over $31,000. So we were able to save our community that much in staff time by just having volunteer support in our downtown. We joined the Main Street Program in 2009, so we've been tracking these stats for 16 years now. And you can see we've made a huge impact in, in the downtown district through this Main Street Program over the last 16 years. So we've had 114 building rehabs, 21 facade improvements, 64 public improvement projects. You can see there that is 12 million in public investment, over 114 million in private, but that's 126 million in total investment. And the number that's fun for me to kind of pull out of that is that for every dollar that the municipality is investing in improvement projects downtown, our private stakeholders, our private business owners and property owners are investing another $9.43. So the Main Street Program truly has a great return on investment in the downtown area. Since 2009, we've also created 388 net new jobs and 67 net new businesses, and we've had 26 businesses expand their operations, and we've tracked more than 13,000 volunteer hours, and that is more than $347,000 of volunteer time donated. I did put together a little graph there that shows the total investment over time. You can see really in that, like, 2021, 2022, there was a huge spike of just investment, and especially our private, our private business owners, private building owners investing into the downtown area. And then I will turn it over to Dan to present on the organization's accomplishments.
As Ashley mentioned, I've been coming here since, right before Maxwell's opened to Waxaw. My daughter was a teacher at Cuthbertson Middle School, and my grandchildren went through the Cuthbertson School System. So I've seen what's happened to the town and how it's grown. I lived in Asheville from, moved there in 1986 when Asheville was pretty much boarded up, and served on a lot of things when I was Pharmacy Director there, Mission Health and the community. And one of the things that happened in Asheville over time was local people in Asheville don't go to downtown Asheville anymore. It's become big hotels and expensive restaurants. And so when I was asked to get involved in this volunteer opportunity here, one of my major goals was I do not want to have Asheville happen here to Waxaw. We are a national historic preservation site. We've been around, you know, since before the Revolutionary War. We were on the Great Wagon Road. And one of the things that's unique about this town to me is the small-town character that we have in our community and our, and our county, and with the railroad and the railroad bridge. All of that's what we're here for. So we started the official nonprofit for the Waxaw Downtown Association a few years ago, and what we've been accomplishing is we have received national accreditation for three years in a row. We launched a Friends of Downtown, and we have sponsorship campaigns. And if you go to our website, we really would need to get more Friends of Downtown to help support the downtown and have it be community-based to preserve the character of what we have. One of the things that's most exciting to me is my nature is I'm a strategic planner, and I like to look at visions and where plans can go, and one of the things you're going to hear tonight is the Downtown Master Plan, which we're really excited about, and that's one of the things we're going to be charged with helping to implement for the town. We've debuted some downtown merchandise. We've worked to rebrand the Downtown Waxaw logo and brand and all that to make sure that we are truly a bridge and a connection from the past to the future. We've restructured our organizations, and we really do need more volunteers, and I think our Economic Vitality Committee has added two or three people. We could add volunteers to each of our committees, and we really need to do that more. Another thing that I'm really pleased with is our board now not only includes business owners, we have the owner of Cork, one of the owners of Cork and Ale's on our board, one of the owners of Provisions is on our board, and...
Bean and Bell.
What is it?
Bean and Bell.
Bean and Bell. I, I, I can't say that very well. And then we also have now one of the owners of one of the properties that, you know, Rich, they, they own, he owns the building that Middle James is now in. So we are, have this really good mix, and we want to keep that going and increase it. Our Design Committee has let, worked with the Public Arcs Groups to create the Crosswalk Murals and the mural that we have. We plant plants and try and keep the planters beautiful, and Kate's one of the people that leads that, so we're really thankful for that. We are going to have some new digital kiosks. Right now, one of the comments we get is our signs are out of date because we've had some changeover, and the kiosk is going to be digital. It'll also be tied to our website. And we've also worked with the Historic Preservation Committee to preserve and improve our buildings. If you want to know about bricks and how to preserve bricks, get involved in our, in our committees. Because it's really important. And we, we, we do semi-annual parking studies. There are a lot of parking spaces in downtown Waxaw, but a lot of people don't know where they're at, so we're, we're going to be working to improve the signage to our parking spaces and improve the walkability so that people know how to get safely from parking areas they wouldn't normally think to go to. I'll talk just a little bit about the promotion. One of the things that we're really trying to do is to coordinate the interest of our businesses with that of the community, with things like Indie Independent Retail Association Month, Fright Night, the Small Business Saturday, and this year's past St. Patty's Day Program, where we coordinated with the businesses, so we had actually two functions, and we provided some stuff to go along with that. And our communications channels and the website is really going to be an important thing going forward, and we're working with our merchants on that. Organization, we are, I'll just talk a little bit about, we are in, going to be forming some sponsorship organizations. We do have a lot of people in the community, big customer, or big businesses, healthcare, banks, that we think can help support and fund some of our activities, and also individuals in, in, in our businesses. And we're working very closely with Parks and Rec to make sure that as our events evolve over time, that they're going to be events that not only benefit the businesses but also benefit the people that attend them, and they're going to be a lot more fun. And lastly, I'll just go to the next line. We're done. Okay. Thank you.
Happy to take any questions for me, Dan, or Kate, or any of our other board members.
Any questions from the board? Alrighty.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Next up.
As I mentioned, our annual report will be live on the downtown website tomorrow morning. So if you go to downtownwaxaw.com, you can see all of the statistics and all the projects we've been working on over the last year. So big thanks to Alara for getting that together and getting that posted and ready to go.
Thank you, thank you. Alrighty. Next up, Downtown Master Plan. Take a breath.
Okay, I'll stick up here. So we mentioned this a little bit in our, our presentation. We have been working really hard for the better part of the last year on our Downtown Waxaw Master Plan. We did a strategic planning session two years ago with the Department of Commerce and the North Carolina Main Street Program, really trying to decide like what is next for Downtown Waxaw. And the biggest thing that came out of that discussion, obviously with like working on our vision, vision and mission and our economic development strategies for downtown, kind of the next big project that came out was really doing a Downtown Master Plan so that we had a cohesive vision among all of the parties, the community, the downtown business owners, our residents, our shoppers, our building owners, as well as town staff and elected officials, to make sure that we had a cohesive and comprehensive plan for the way that downtown grew over the last year. So last fall, we put out an RFQ, and we selected Boudreau Group as the firm to work with us on this plan. They're working with Thomason Hutton and Arnett and Moldro, and we have a lot of their team here tonight. So we have gone through a lot of public input on this plan, and we have a draft for the board to review tonight. So I'll invite Irene up to introduce the team, and, and we'll, we'll let, we'll let you guys present. We do have members of the Downtown Waxaw Board as well as our Master Plan Steering Committee here. If you guys have any questions, we do have some mics that you guys can use for any input there. And then for the board, if you guys have questions, feel free to ask them tonight. If there are any like changes, recommendations, or feedback that you want to make, just let me know. We can schedule a meeting after this. And I'll also point out, this is being recorded, so this will be able to be viewed online, and we will share it with our board members that aren't here tonight as well. So Irene, I'll let you have at it.
Thank you, Ashley.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Murray, and Commissioner Wedra, and Commissioner Don. So I'm Irene Dumas-Tyson, Director Planning with Boudreau, and I would like to introduce our amazing team. So behind me have Ryan Bland, who is my colleague at Boudreau, and then with Thomason Hutton, we have, let's see, yeah, there you are, John Winters, and also Jeff Smith with us, and then also with Arnett Moldro, we have Aaron Arnett, who is here. And so we all have a little bit to share with you about this master plan. But I do want to say, because I think I do speak for the entire team, it has been such a pleasure to be working with the Town of Waxaw. So since January, we have been immersing ourselves in this whole community. We have attended really fun events here. We've had a lot of great public input, and so it just really has been a joy, and y'all are a really amazing community. I know y'all know that, and we hope that, that this plan is going to be a part of helping, making sure that you preserve what's so wonderful here. Usually when we go into a community, we like to create a vision, but Downtown Waxaw Association already had such a strong vision for where they wanted to be in the future, and so we really let that be our guide. I think the only thing that we would change, and Aaron's going to speak to this just a little bit, is that it's the premier destination in Union County. We feel that Downtown Waxaw is a premier destination throughout the Carolinas. You have such a draw here for people who come here to visit, to shop, to enjoy your restaurants, your great parks. So you really are a premier destination for a larger region here, and that's a wonderful place to be. The scope that we had when we started this plan, again, we were focused on downtown for the entire plan. Obviously, we looked a little bit outside of the boundaries of downtown because that does impact, influence what goes on, but we really were focused on the downtown area. Parking is always a challenge in downtown areas. It's always kind of number one. So that is something that we did try, that we have some, we hope have some really good solutions, creative solutions for that. And then also looking at how you can really connect people throughout the downtown. You have such a beautiful, walkable downtown, and really the entire town. How can we increase that pedestrian connectivity, bike connectivity, all your different trails? You know, again, to get people out of the car a little bit more and enjoy walking around. So those were really kind of our big, kind of big ticket items that we were addressing, and as always happens, a few things always come up in the process, too, that, that we addressed. We are now towards the end of our process here. We did start in January, and we're going to share a little bit of you of some of the public input that we heard, and then our analysis, and then our recommendations. And again, what you have right now is the draft master plan, and we look forward to receiving your comments so that we can incorporate those and then get the final draft ready for all of you to, to hopefully adopt, and so that y'all can start putting it into action for the downtown area. I'm going to turn this over to, let's see, do we have the guiding principles? Were they...
They're after.
Oh, they're after, okay, all right, perfect, all right, we're going to go in there. All right, but I'm going to turn this over to Ryan, and he's going to share with you a little bit about the public engagement.
Yes, absolutely. Public engagement was a cornerstone of this to get us started and throughout the process. We want to be able to engage as many people as we could in as many different ways that we could within reason as part of this planned process. Public input sessions, the next kind of three slides address this three-day charrette that was held in March, which was kind of just an intense three-day effort to get as much input as we could. We had three open public input sessions. One of them, you see here at Downtown Park, but the next morning, we had a breakfast opportunity at Provisions and a work session here in the chambers. And you can kind of see the highlights there, character, walkability, supporting local business, traffic started to really pop up as part of those themes. We had a number of focus groups, I think five initially, and then two additional, ranging from entrepreneurs to middle-school students. from entrepreneurs to middle school students, to property owners. We wanted to get as many opinions as we could in a kind of a more targeted fashion, but a lot of the same themes you see pop up throughout the process. We wanted to go where people were. So, had a pop-up event during K-Fest, and had staffed with Downtown Waxahau Association's staff, Ashley and Irene, from our group, and had a great turnout there, where people were able to kind of give us their big-picture ideas, what priorities should be downtown. We backed that up with a survey following, which has opened six weeks following that effort, from April until late May. We had a great turnout, great participation, over 300, 245 of those being residents, and almost everybody was eating downtown, which wasn't too surprising when you look at, if you're ever down there. About a third visit at least a few times a week. We had a pretty good, balanced participation as far as age groups. It's been nice to get some of the younger folks to fill out surveys on their phones. We tried to give that a good push, but otherwise really got a good balance, kind of pie there. And how do most people get their information? We just kind of wanted to know. Social media, Town of Waxahau, Downtown Waxahau Association, so that's telling us that the information's getting out there through those channels. We like to know what people, how people describe it. One word, you see here, quaint, charming, that kind of gives us the character. And a lot of times, if they're kind of said in ways like this, we know that this is character people want to keep. How do people get downtown? They drive, but their biggest issues are traffic and congestion and parking. So, there's kind of something we're trying to reconcile there as part of this plan, is what are some alternatives to these? Some of the challenges facing Downtown Waxahau, traffic, parking, and preserving historic assets being the top three. People want more restaurants, even though that's kind of a driver down there right now, people still said they wanted more restaurants and want more entertainment. And then kind of the smaller stores and supporting existing business. Priorities for public spaces, people want to gather. People want to gather kind of more than parking, but just a little bit. So, parking was right there next, but then just overall safety of getting around downtown. We want to know how important is their existing architectural landscape character as we move forward? Really important, over 70% is in that very important category. Almost everybody else fell above the median, so. We want to know, as part of looking at this, if we're looking at where you can fit new businesses and how you park them, we had to ask the question, to what extent should we consider a parking structure as part of this? And 48% were supportive, with additional 20% kind of in that agnostic category. So, we explored opportunities for that and asked what was important if we were to do that. Affordability, accessibility, visibility, cleanliness, lighting. So, those are the top things that people said that would maybe cause them to consider using such a structure. Overall, the kind of the top sentiments that came out of that, not just the survey, but the effort overall, traffic, parking, traffic relief and parking being at the top. Preserving that small-town character is right behind it. Promoting active community space, walkability, and continuing to diversify local business. And sometimes, it's just diversifying local restaurants is some of the comments that we received on that, because again, that kind of, that theme people like to eat downtown. So then, we took the public input, and we tried to create these guiding principles for the plan. The guiding principles are essentially kind of thoughts that drive kind of the plan effort, but also are intended to be kind of memorialized, so that they help the decision-making process moving forward. If you have something that doesn't exactly fall right there with the plan, how much does it meet, how close can I get to these things, as I kind of use that as a filter moving forward for decision-making? Preserving Waxahau's small-town character and charm, fostering a pleasant and navigable downtown experience, spaces for everybody, strengthening downtown as a vibrant, social, and local destination, and then to be able to grow thoughtfully and equity with community being the core. And from there, I will turn over to Erin, who has kind of the market side of this, to also fuel this plan effort.
Thanks. Can I have that? So, our role, again, is market and economic development. And, you know, as Kate was mentioning earlier, and Ashley was saying it as well, y'all've got a great downtown. Y'all've got zero vacancy. We never work in a community like that. You all are an awesome, you have an awesome downtown. You have a downtown that truly is a destination, like Irene was saying. The market data bore that out. I think our role here collectively is to take this awesome, great downtown that you have, and help you all take it to the next level. Now, all of our work that we do with the Boudreaux Group is market-based planning. So, you know, everything starts with understanding the market, understanding what those economic opportunities happen to be, and that data informing things like land use, informing things like transportation, and certainly informing things like economic development. So, that's what I want to share with you here. In order for us to really do that detailed market research, we have to first understand what is the market geography that's relevant to downtown. I think you all know that your downtown doesn't just serve the people that live within the municipal limits of Waxahau. It serves a much broader area. The data absolutely bore that out. The first thing that we looked at was placer data. Placer, if you're familiar with it, is, it's phone locational data, and it can track people who come in and out of your district, and that's the study we did here. We drew a boundary for your district and pulled all of the data for a one-year period during that time, one year leading up to the beginning of this plan. During that time, the year before we started this plan, you had 1.5 million people, unique people, unique visits that came into your downtown. And I think the official word for that is just an insane amount of people. That's 3,000 unique zip codes. So, there's the main Waxahau zip code, and 3,001 other zip codes that came into your downtown. You've got a very broad market, and you'll see that here on the next slide, but just 37% of your visits came from the Waxahau zip code itself, even less from the Town of Waxahau. You had folks from all 50 states and DC. Placer doesn't collect international data, but I know that y'all had international visitors here to this community as well. And, you know, all this tells us is that your downtown, the small, little downtown nestled at the bottom of, you know, North Carolina, on the border with South Carolina, you are a destination. And the businesses that are here, the properties owners that are here are a testament to that. So, what we do with that data first, that's just kind of looking at the sheer numbers. As we take that and we analyze it and figure out, okay, what is our geography that is relevant to us? Basically, what we do is we look at the visits within individual zip codes and compare them visits per 1,000 population. And what that does is that helps us define what our primary bread-and-butter local market happens to be. That's the orange area that you see there on the map. And then what our secondary trade area is, which is also a loyal local customer base, but those folks will live a little bit further away, and they have choices. When they're going out to eat, are they going up to Ballantyne, or are they coming down here to Waxahau? But what we see here is that you will have a pretty large trade area. I don't normally see this many zip codes represented in a study, in a trade area, particularly in an urban market, which you all obviously are in the Charlotte metro area. If you look at it, you see that that purple secondary trade area pulls to the north. I can tell you, a lot of times when I come into these communities and I do my research, I feel like I have a good understanding about what the trade areas are going to show, just because I've worked in similar communities, and I know the markets and all of that. And rarely am I wrong, but I was wrong here. I thought that you all were going to be pulling more from South Carolina, that you all, that your trade area was really going to be the inverse of this. That wasn't the case at all. You can see that your primary trade area is Waxahau, the Main-Monroe zip, and then Lancaster, and then your secondary trade area is everything north of you all in South Charlotte. And as we got talking about this, and we talked to some of our stakeholders and visitors, what we learned is, yeah, you're pulling from that area. You are absolutely relevant to that area, and it's most likely due to the fact that there's a real lack of traditional downtowns in that purple area. You all here in Waxahau serve as that traditional historic downtown for a much larger market. And it's also due to those, again, those independent businesses and dining establishments that you have in your downtown that really makes it a destination. All the data points to that. Once we figure out those trade areas, then we do the detailed market analysis. And I'm just going to hit on some of the high notes on this. In the first couple of slides, let's just chalk this up to things you all already know, okay? You all have had substantial growth in the past, population growth. And again, that word doesn't do your growth justice. In the last 15 years, you all have had 142% population growth. If we look at, go back to the last 25 years, so go to 2000, and granted, that's 25 years, you've grown by, population by a meager 682%. I mean, that is just absolutely significant, substantial growth. We all know that. Everybody in this room knows that. We also have, when we compare you all to the larger region, you all are more affluent than your neighbors, you have a higher median household income. Waxahau was 119,000 median household income. The zip code, which of course does include Marvin as well, you all know that, was about 147,000 median household income. Both of those figures are really high when we look at the larger region. By the same token, we look at other demographic indicators, you all have a lot of younger people here, younger professionals, and younger families here in your town, and you all are highly educated. So, again, chalk all that up to things you already know. Now, we're not going to dwell on this, because I think our focus on downtown is more looking at downtown as a commercial center, but we also looked at housing. You all, if you look at your housing stock in Waxahau proper, 79% of it was built since 2000. Again, that goes hand-in-hand with the population increases that I was talking about before. Median home value, again, if we compare you all to the larger region, you all, Marvin, others that are right here next to you all, your zip code, really are at the higher end of home values within the larger region. Those are also real positive indicators. But another thing that I think is really important for us to understand, and it may even have some relevance in our downtown, affordability. If we look at all the people that own homes and rent homes in your area, it will, excuse me, within the town proper, 34% of your renters are cost burden. And what that means is, they're spending more than 30% of their income on housing costs, that'd be rent plus utilities. That 34% is a high number. I don't have it here on my notes, but the homeowners themselves was about 10 or 12%, I believe. That's not, I see that quite a bit whenever I'm working in communities, whether they're affluent like this area, or whether they're not. But that number, 34%, is something that we have to understand collectively in this larger, not just downtown, but the larger area. But I think all of this points to, we've had exceptional growth, trying to think of other words to describe your growth. You know, you've had a tremendous amount of residential that has developed over time. Downtown needs to support that, right? Downtown needs to support your residential. New business, expanded businesses in your downtown will diversify your tax base, which is really important when we think about, you know, what, I think 89% residential, 11% commercial, and I know that there's some newer numbers that show even higher residential percentage as well. So, downtown can be a receiving area for us to have some of this new commercial investment to diversify our tax base, but also to support commerce that our locals need. So, the last couple of slides really gets to some of the bread and butter of what we looked at. And the main study we did from a commercial standpoint is a retail leakage study. And I'm sure there's loads of people in the room who are familiar with retail leakage, but for those that aren't, I'll explain it to you, and I have to use my hands to do this. If we look at our trade area geographies, and we compare what stores that exist in that trade area sell on an annual basis, to what residents who live in that trade area purchase on an annual basis. If residents are purchasing a lot more than stores are selling, that means dollars are leaking. They're going outside of your community because that particular good or service isn't located here. Well, when we look at your data, whether we look at the Town of Waxahau proper, which is less important than our trade areas in terms of market research, but if we look at our primary and secondary trade area as well, you all have a significant amount of leakage. And leakage translates directly to demand. But what this data shows is that our businesses that we have within our downtown, and within our Town of Waxahau proper, and within our trade areas, aren't really serving the needs of our residential population. In fact, if we look at our primary trade area alone, last year, there was $2.7 billion in leakage. Leakage, again, translates directly to demand. And all of that is really kind of the writing on the wall for us if we're thinking about economic development in Waxahau proper, but in this case particularly in downtown. What does that mean? The last slide here I'll share with you is a very conservative capture scenario. We look at all that demand, we look at all that leakage, and we think, okay, if we just capture just 10% of what's leading those three primary trade area zip codes, and just 1% of what's leaving our secondary trade area, the purple area that you saw on that map earlier, it's a very conservative estimate. What does that mean in terms of potential capture into the core of our community and into our downtown? And we're looking at the potential for up to 331,000 square feet of additional commercial that could be accommodated in the core of your community. And you see some of the key categories there. We talked about how y'all've got a great dining destination, you absolutely do. If you look at your placer data, by the way, you'll see peaks at lunchtime and at dinnertime, because your restaurants are really driving a lot of your activity in your downtown. So, y'all've built this cluster, y'all've become this dining destination, but there's still demand for additional dining establishments here in your community. So, the tune, about 47,000 square feet. Clothing stores was another opportunity for demand. Grocery stores was interesting. Now, you're most likely not going to get, or don't want, or don't have space for a traditional, conventional grocery store in your downtown, and we're showing about 35,000 square feet of demand. That, just to give you a frame of reference, that's about a typical food line, is what we're talking about there. Now, again, we're not suggesting that that be accommodated in downtown, but you certainly could have the potential for independent grocers that go in your downtown. The demand shows that, as well as specialty foods, which is in that category as well. If we're thinking about the types of uses that will continue to solidify our downtown, there's demand for that. Other opportunities, general merchandising, that's a weird category, because it covers everything from Walmarts and Targets, to Dollar Generals and Family Dollars, to independent general mercantile like you have already in your downtown, but also things like you may be familiar with mass general stores and other destinational things of that nature, there's demand for that. Again, we're not suggesting that you look for a Dollar General in your downtown, but there's demand for that type of business. How can we recruit that type of business that's going to be a destination and help really solidify the market in our downtown? Other opportunities are furniture and home furnishings, health and personal care, which is drugstores, electronics, sporting goods, which I think is very important here in your community with the recreational resources that you all are continuing to build here. There's demand for commerce to support that, nursery and garden stores. We look at about 70 different categories, and we break down this demand by those different categories. All of that will be in the final report, and these are just the highlights here. So, with that, I will turn it back over to Ryan, or... So with that, I will turn it back over to Ryan or...
Okay. All right. So as Erin said, the data drives our recommendations. And the other thing that drives our recommendations and influence them really goes back to the guiding principles that Ryan presented to you. So as, you know, all of the recommendations that we have now really do speak to what these guiding principles are. Number one, preserving your small town character and scale, enhancing that downtown experience, creating really wonderful places for people to gather, to play, to shop, and just to enjoy and connect, strengthening the downtown fabric, making sure it remains vibrant, and to make sure that you're growing thoughtfully and intentionally inequitably too. So this is the overall master plan, and John is going to, and Jeff will both speak to this, different parts of it. But, you know, one thing you know, we all know, is that God's not making any more real estate in the downtown area, right? So, I mean, it's limited, you know, as much as we would like to be able to do that, but it's limited. So how can, again, we provide, looking at the conservative numbers of what Erin was talking to, 331,000 square feet of commercial space, retail, commercial, hospitality in the downtown area? So we're going to go a little bit, so just to give you an overview, so we were looking at, number one, sites at the city that the town owns as our first opportunities and how we can maybe convert parking lots into buildable areas here. And so we did some test fitting, and one of those happens to be at church and North Main and then also at McDonald and Broom. No, wait, Broom, I've got, I'm getting my streets on me. Broom and North Main, McDonald and church, sorry. Thank you very much. So we started looking at where those opportunities are, where we can do some infill development that would really provide some great opportunities to meet some of the needs that Erin spoke about. And so taking just these areas right here, we wanted to do a test fit. Now, we're not designing anything right now, but what this begins to do is kind of test those guiding principles and do that test fit, looking at that historic scale and kind of character of downtown. So this is there at Broom and North Main Street where, you know, there's a vacant lot right now. So we're showing that you can meet some really wonderful needs here with, this could be a restaurant, this could be some of your, you know, art space, it could be retail space, the clothing stores that we talked about, general merchandise. And then, knowing that green space is still very important, you know, particularly with what, just how iconic the water tank is and how we can still provide some of that green space for the community to gather there. So, again, this is just a test fit to begin to show what could happen on some of the infill opportunities here in town. Ryan talked about parking, and the survey was saying, okay, is there kind of an appetite to test to see, you know, could a structured parking work here in downtown Waxahau? So this is a massing study that we did, the triangle area, you know, down where Broom and church kind of come together there. And because of the topography there, you know, you could do a three-story parking structure there, roughly 300 parking spaces, and close it in some retail, perhaps there's a boutique hotel there, perhaps it's, again, some of that, the retail, commercial space that Erin was talking about, making that mixed use. So, again, that can begin to meet some of that need there with the parking structure and just test fitting it. One thing that's important too, it doesn't need to look like a parking deck that you would see in some urban setting. So it could be, you know, again, we propose that it would be wrapped in, you know, in some other type of use, active uses, either, like we say, boutique hotels, some retail restaurants, but it could also incorporate some art on one side, it could incorporate kind of some living walls, but, you know, again, you're not looking at a parking lot. But it's just important that it reflects the character and the values of the town of Waxahau here. So, just a few ideas there. The other area, the kind of infill that we looked at and did a test fitting is over in the Mill District. That's a really... Again, to take advantage of some infill sites to provide some of the retail, commercial, you know, you may need some office space because as wonderful as it is to say you've got, you know, zero vacancies in downtown, you heard Ashley talk about the people who are knocking at your doors to come here. And so beginning to look at those infill sites and, again, having those guiding principles and making sure the scale of the development, this is great opportunities for public-private partnerships that can begin to welcome those other businesses that want to be here and still really maintain that character and scale of downtown. All right. And this is, just we'll show you. So based on the massing studies that we have shown you with those four infill sites, that gets to roughly 235,000 square feet. It's not getting all the way to the 331,000 square feet that, you know, that you, really the demand that's there for it, but this starts to get you there. And this is something that can happen, you know, can be phased over time, so. And there would be a net increase of parking spaces because obviously when you do some development, you're going to take some parking spaces, but with the structured parking, you would have a net increase of 245 parking spaces in the downtown area to serve everyone. Okay? All right. Ryan, you want to dive into this real quickly?
Sure. This is just real quick. So the implementation strategies, there's kind of a, the cornerstone of the document is some specific things that can be done moving forward to fit within the downtown master plan. Here's kind of how they get divided out. Navigating to and around downtown, so that's connecting downtown outward to existing neighborhoods or neighborhoods that we know are being developed. Connectivity within downtown and then being able to make your way around downtown through wayfinding. Optimizing parking continues to be a theme and have several recommendations along those lines. Investing in creating beautiful spaces, inclusive spaces. Being able to facilitate that additional square feet to open up additional opportunity and, again, meet local need for additional services and goods. And then to be able to provide the policy background to be able to make those sorts of things happen. And so I'm going to turn it over to John to go through the, kind of the navigating to and around downtown piece of this.
Thank you, Ryan. Good evening. So we talk about connectivity and getting people downtown. Connectivity has kind of been broken up into two levels here. One, getting people downtown, and the yellow dashed lines, these are not new connections. These, what we started was, when we started this process, we met with the staff, we looked at y'all's GIS, y'all have an amazing organized system which really made things easy for us to understand what's been discussed in the past. But these connections, they are the key to getting people downtown without increasing traffic, without requiring more parking. And the next level of connectivity that we'll dive into is, once people are downtown, how are they going to move around downtown? Continuing to make these connections, these multi-use paths, these greenways a priority, not only make the connection, make them wide and safe. You know, you have, on this map, let me step back for a second because we've got a lot of rings and a lot of colors going on. So a pet shed, there's a five-minute walk, a 10-minute walk. Those are, you know, how long it takes for someone to kind of walk within that area. As you can see, the downtown area is very, very walkable. So once we get people downtown, they'll be able to move around downtown and to experience everything that y'all have to offer. With that being said, this makes downtown for an ideal place for pedestrian-focused transportation. To help enhance this, we proposed what we're calling these trailheads, park and cycle. You know, once you get outside of a 10-minute walk, you know, then you're kind of looking at, all right, let's see, you know, let's have trails where people can cycle into downtown, which as a father of three, it's not just a mode of transportation, but that's also an activity that you can do with a family. That's an experience of, you know, jumping on that trail and going downtown to get ice cream or soda or every, or go to the downtown park. This will allow for visitors to bike and get in downtown without increasing parking and traffic.
Get back to Bush.
Yeah.
Please?
Yes.
Get back to the map. I need you to be something. I set your alarm up.
Thank you.
I can't get back there.
Try climbing.
Is that door open? Here, here. I'm fixing the clock. I don't need, I just need this one. I understand what you're trying to do. I was like I told you a while ago, I grew up here. Everything that you're talking about is wrong. It's not what these people here are here for. Do y'all, I'll stop here. Look at this. You see this right here? You see this brown area? That's Yarborough Farms. This is all houses, is this road, Waxahau Parkway bypass. This is all we're here for. See where it starts at the circle and it starts by, I mean, patching up? That's Olivia starting there. That's 800 acres empty right now. So you picture 800 acres to get to this circle. Now, this is all vacant land. I hate to know what this is, but you get right here, this is all commercial, it's already zoned, this green area. So the people at Maxwell's Tavern and all the people that we support today, it would take people from there to there that I hate. And then all this over here, this map ain't complete. That's pote grounds, that's another 6,000, 6,000 homes right there. We're all here tonight because of this, this part right here, this line. That's all we're here for. So all this planning and all this downtown, who's been to West Jefferson? Raise your hands. Nobody? Few people? You go to West Jefferson, it's a small town in the mountains. We go there a lot to get our Christmas trees. Been going there a long time. But the charm of it is, is what Waxahau was, and it still is today, when you go there, it's the same restaurants, the same people, the same everything. But you know that when you go, but that's what draws you back there. So we start making all these changes. Waxahau becomes something. I don't know what it is. I love what it is today. So I don't understand all the change, I don't understand all this myself. I'm puzzled by it. But I just know if we continue this path we're on today, Waxahau would never be Waxahau, which is, there's another 4,000 projected. There's 800 acres there. Frank Cowenham's got 1,200 acres there. Once that's finished out, who knows? I'm done. I'm just, I'm too mad to talk right now.
I just...
I need to stop one more second. The reason I'm mad, I got four generations up at my park. Well, that parkway's... And it's going to take Jared's house, go to the disc house, Jeff and Linky's house. It's going to take a treehouse here, the treehouse, that's just going. Going to the disc house property. You taking, you putting people out of their homes. Probably all spent. I'll allow you here to do that.
May, Mary, if I could, so we want to complete our presentation on downtown.
Yes, please do.
Because the parkway is not part of our project. We're just showing it because it's something that is on there and...
It's currently on the map, so that's why they're showing it here.
It's currently on the map and...
It's not an integral part of this plan.
And this really is focused on really connecting downtown.
The downtown.
So, yeah, we would like to.
Exactly.
And appreciate the comments too, but...
Thank you.
And just to clarify, we're just talking about pedestrian sidewalks, multi-use paths, you know, so we have nothing to do with the parkway. So once you get the people downtown, the fabric, the framework, the assets that y'all have with South Main Street, North Main Street, the downtown park, it really truly is something special. So the L lines that we're looking at here is, is once people are downtown, what can we do to continue to make safe connections, cohesive connections where people can kind of flow through the downtown area in a safe manner? One area that I would like to mention here is the Broom Street, North Main, South Main connection. One idea that we're proposing, and we're working with Kimley Horn with their Broom Street improvements, is right now, you can see it on every aerial photo, I experienced it when we were doing our walkabout downtown. When you're crossing over North and South Main Street, the traffic turning left, going east, there's a conflict there with people at the crosswalk and cars turning to go east. One idea that we have is, let's move that crosswalk to the other side so that there's not that conflict between cars and pedestrians crossing over to the south side of South Main Street. And then also continue that sidewalk all the way down on South Main Street on the other side, on the car side, where you now can have a fluid, continuous connection from when people come over the pedestrian bridge, they now can go down, they can go west. And then let's strengthen that connection through Barnes Park. Y'all's downtown park is absolutely awesome. It is, I think, the only criticism I have, and it's not even criticism, but it's an opportunity. The other additional opportunity is, is how do we extend that connection of the park to the downtown area? And then is there opportunity to make a southern connection of the park? Because you have schools on the southern end of Waxahau. So how can we have a more formalized cohesive connection to the downtown park coming from the south?
So another part of, you know, the physical strategy of downtown is looking to improve your wayfinding in downtown. You've got great, wonderful, beautiful, awesome wayfinding already in your community, and we've got some recommendations to enhance that specifically for downtown, helping to solidify the boundaries of downtown and promote it as a destination. Focus on improving visibility and readability with your wayfinding that you have, particularly in downtown, and particularly for parking resources, which is incredible thing. But also enhancing your existing wayfinding, which I think was done about 11 years ago, 12 years ago, it's been a while. And since then, y'all have had some changes. You've got this beautiful, awesome park that we were just talking about there, but, you know, it's, there's no signage to it right now. That's something that can easily be enhanced throughout, you know, some improved wayfinding. As well as there's been some changes over time, like, you know, you used to get turn onto East North Main off of Broom, and you can't do that anymore. And so enhancing the signage that already exists, solidifying downtown as a destination, and improving visibility and readability, there's strategies for that as part of this physical plan as well.
And while the massing studies tried to take a look at what kind of structured parking could be accommodated, it recognizes that kind of a decentralized approach, similar to has been taken, will need to probably continue into the near future. And that's working within existing rights of way, working with existing landowners to find those parking opportunities to be able to be scattered throughout downtown. So to continue to pursue those public-private partnerships and working with existing infrastructure to be able to facilitate that. And I'll hand some of this off to John, but enter investing in beautiful, inclusive public spaces. The board members here talked about existing greening efforts, being able to continue those throughout downtown was one big theme that we heard. But to also, to provide this connection, again, between downtown and downtown park to be able to kind of leverage as best you can that asset that's just right there. And I'm going to let John talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Ryan. The connection through Barnes Park from Main Street to the downtown Waxahau Park, the framework's been set up with the... the, the framework's been set up with the initial design of Waxaw Park. It's a great opportunity. I'm excited to see where, how things progress with that, just because it's only gonna make the downtown Waxaw area that, that much better. We talk about cohesive streetscape design. You know, as we look to stretch, and I say stretch, because there's some infill downtown, infill development opportunities. So as we look to kind of stretch that downtown area to get more opportunities for businesses, you know, this is the part of the fabric that's gonna tie everything together. Y'all know what y'all did with the first block on North Main Street is fantastic. It has all the elements. It has site furniture, planners, banners, lighting. It's a very inviting space. It has all the elements that, that you, you want to see in a successful streetscape. So how can we introduce that to other gaps within the downtown area where it could be lacking? Lighting is a big one. I think as we go east towards what we're calling the, where the mill, the mill is, is that right? The mill? The, the lighting changes a little bit, so I think cohesive lighting is, would, would really help people feel comfortable walking in around the downtown area. And then also look for opportunities for indoor art and performance spaces. And then, uh, so, you wanna? This one kind of touches on all of our, our specialties, so.
So I have, with this, what we really hope that you see, again, this is focused on downtown. The data proves the market need. We heard from such a broad spectrum of the community as to what they would like to see in downtown. You've got such a great fabric, and so this is really to improve that. It really is to leverage those available empty sites in downtown to begin to meet some of those market needs, to provide the opportunities for local businesses to start and to grow and to prosper, and, you know, to continue to meet that needs. So, and, and again, to really respect, all of this respecting the existing historic charm and scale of, of downtown with it. You've just, you've, you've just got a great fabric for this. So we would love to open it up to questions from you. We are moving forward. Again, we're at the draft master plan phase. We hope to have this, you know, before you, after we've gotten your comments, to start working on the final draft of this, you know, for adoption. So, and again, we just want to thank you for this opportunity, and all of us are here and available to answer any questions that you may have. And I know y'all haven't had a whole lot of time to, to dive into all the details, but just, you know, if you do have any questions, we would love to answer those for you.
Yeah, personally, I've been looking forward to this plan for several months now, and it's kind of exciting to see it put to paper. And I'm sure the commissioners will have a lot of input over the coming weeks as they digest everything that you've presented today.
Yeah, and I'll note that we reviewed this tonight, and the presentation has been recorded. And you guys, board members, have printed copies here with you. We will also be posting a PDF of the draft online on the downtown website tomorrow. So if you go to downtownwaxaw.com/master-plan, you'll find the copy on there, and there will be ways to give public feedback on the full plan. We'll be collecting those draft comments through August 26th, as they develop that, that final plan that we'll present on September 9th. Additionally, we do have another public input session tomorrow morning, so if anyone is available tomorrow at 8:30, we will be at Middle James Brewing with some coffee and pastries, talking about this plan and next steps for, for this downtown master plan, so.
Excellent.
Thank you for your work on this. It really is striking to think about the demand that's not being met for commercial. You know, Ashley pointed out, there's 80-some businesses queued up to get into Waxaw. And I guess on, in one sense, that's nice, that there's such demand, but in another sense, it's not, because it's a bit like, if you have a restaurant that is constantly full, does it really benefit the restaurant to have the line double or triple or quadruple? No, it doesn't. We're really missing an opportunity here, and it's because we're saddled with three chuckleheads who won't stop approving residential development.
And if I could just say one thing to, to your point, I think what, one of the things that's most unique about downtown Waxaw is, these are all local businesses. And that's, that is part of the charm. And so, you know, I think what the, the data that Aaron shared with you, and kind of the scale of this infill development, will hopefully welcome that, because I think that's, that's what's gonna, you know, help to continue make Waxaw, keep downtown Waxaw, you know, really wonderful. And you've just obviously got that opportunity to continue to grow and foster that, so, yeah.
I did have just one question, and it's getting late, so I don't want to prolong this, but for the survey results, were you able to know where, who was filling out that survey and where they lived? Was it, were they from Waxaw? Because my concern is when you go to a public event like K-Fest, there are people from outside of Waxaw coming to those events, and so how do we figure out if, you know, we want to know what Waxaw, you know, what Waxaw residents want, and what Waxaw residents are willing to pay for in their tax burden?
Right. And what, it was 200 and something, 64 something that were, did live in downtown?
Yeah, correct. That identified as residents. Then, then there were other categories live outside, but in the county, business owner, property owner, so you could select multiple of those, but at least 248, 243, anyway, were Waxaw city-town residents.
Quick, quick second, and a quick question, Ashley. Regarding the list of folks that are, you know, in line waiting, do we have that list broken down to sort of define, or do we separate out the businesses that, I absolutely gotta be in downtown, or else my business doesn't work, or, eh, I could be just outside of downtown, or I'd just like to be in Waxaw? Is, do you have it broken down to that degree?
We do. Yeah, so I would say we probably have around 100 that are, that want to be in town. We have 80 that have specifically said downtown is where I want to be.
Okay, so you have a list that goes beyond the 80 you've been talking about?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know.
So we are in a, in the process with our Economic Vitality team of refining that list. I think we don't have a great, we don't have a great idea of who on that list is ready tomorrow.
Yeah.
So we are going back through to do a survey with every single business that's on that list to say, are you still interested? Give us more info on the type of business. Do you have a business plan? Do you have funding? And what, what that will tell us is, one, who's ready? So when a building comes up, we have a business plan that we can immediately give a property owner and say, this business is ready to go tomorrow. But that also tells us where entrepreneurs are lacking in their readiness. Are, do we have business owners that are missing that business plan piece? And do we need to then provide help on that? Or do we have people that are missing funding, and do we need to help connect more on that funding piece? So I think, Jim, did I, I think Economic Vitality talked about that at their meeting last week. Did I get most of that? Okay.
Cool. And then, audience question? Did you have one?
So we have a million and a half visitors coming here. What does the town get from that? We don't have a sales tax, right? So what do we get?
Yeah, we.
The only place money comes in is from property tax.
We do get taxes from the restaurants, as well as from the businesses, but unfortunately, those taxes go all the way to the county, and then the county then divvies it up from there. So there is a benefit, both from a tax standpoint, from the sale of goods and the sale of items for both the restaurants and the retail, but the primary goal, or the primary benefit, is the real estate tax.
We have $14 million in retail sales, how much do we get?
Yeah, it's, I don't know.
Mayor.
Sir.
The town in the last fiscal year, which ended June 30th, received about $6 million in sales taxes. So you take a $25 million budget, about 25% of that budget comes from state sales tax.
Yep. And, and again, that's money that, it ends up going to the state, and the state kind of gives us what we, they feel is our share. So, but no, we do not have a town sales tax like a lot of other places do. A question in the back, sir?
Yeah, is that $25 million budget, is that included in the road improvements for all those counties? Because it seems to be a lot.
No. The, the, the town budget takes care of and maintains the 74 miles of town road, but as far as county road or NC-75, NC-16, you're, that 25 million doesn't touch those. Those are all county and state things. So your $25 million budget is for some light improvements, some crosswalk improvements, and then again, the 74 some odd miles of town roads. And that's all the roads in the neighborhoods, basically.
So that wouldn't include Waxaw Parkway?
It would not include Waxaw Parkway, no.
Oh, thank you. Because it seems to me like, I'm in commercial real estate, I've been at it 40 years, it seems like Waxaw needs a road network and improve roads before we jump into a lot of high-intensity development, because the congestion is coming, and, you know, to, to address that first, if it's cooperation with the county or the state or whatever, and get that in place before you build all this stuff, because the demand's gonna be there. Because we're in the growth, path of growth of Charlotte, obviously. Our demographics are very high, but get the infrastructure in place so that everybody's not putting a gun to their head to get home in the afternoons, you know?
Yep. That would be the preferred way of doing it. Unfortunately, that's not how the state does it. So that's a hard one. Thank you, though. All righty. Questions from the board? Comments from the board? Sure, there's a microphone behind you, sir.
What does, what does it mean when it says?
Talking into the microphone.
Is gonna adopt this plan? I'm gonna adopt this plan. That means, okay, that's considered for adoption. Okay, we vote, and we adopted the plan. So from day of adoption on, we're gonna move forward with that plan?
What this does, yeah, that's a great question. That's a great question. And basi-
What is this?
Sorry, I pressed my button. Basically, what this is, is an aspirational plan that the town can use when developers come to us saying, hey, I noticed you got a piece of dirt there. Can I do something with it? And we can come back and say, you got a plan. Can you do this with it? And what you're thinking could benefit the builder in this way, and what we're thinking could benefit the town in that way. So it becomes more of a partnership-type agreement that we can then work towards. But this is, again, just an aspirational goal. It's a way of giving us kind of a sense of direction as to where we think the town should develop. One of the things that, when we first started this project, I was basically, the, the overall scope is buildings and parking spots. Those are the two things that this plan really kind of focuses on, and it answers that fundamental question. Where can we put a new building to have a new business, to maintain the economic growth of the town, and maintain the vitality of the economy within Waxaw? And then where are those new patrons gonna park? So this gives us some goals to shoot for, and it gives us an outline of maybe where to put things and what, what they might look like. In, in no way is this a place where we're gonna start pumping tax dollars. This, this is not something that the town is gonna end up paying for in building and developing. This is something we can put pencil to paper and point to when developers come along saying, can I put this building there? Can I put that building there? And we can look at this and say, yeah, you know, this fits really well with that and the other thing. So it's very aspirational.
Okay, so it's not a, let, let's start building this.
No.
Or just a roadmap, or kind of a guideline as to, what's, here's what we'd like to see happen in these particular areas, how do we make that happen?
Exactly. Sure.
Yeah, I have one question.
You wait for the microphone real quick? So we are recording this, so it'd be great to record your questions, too.
I also want to say, yeah, on that last point, the plan will include a really lengthy implementation plan that includes big stuff, but also little things. And it will include the partners that will take care of those items. So like the Downtown Waxaw Association will be able to do a lot of the projects, and that's, would, would be something that wouldn't be a burden on the municipal budget. It could also include other partners, like the Union County Community Arts Council or, or other groups in the area. So it's not just something, it's not just strategies and goals for the town to accomplish, but for all of us, with all of our partners altogether.
And, and along that line, too, to highlight, this plan includes everything as, as big as a, a three-story parking structure with retail all around it to better pedestrian access. So it's got big stuff in it, and it's got little stuff in it, and this is just one of those things that the town can start working towards with our private partners.
Yeah, I, 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 am I on?
You're on.
Kind of an economic development question for you, and I apologize, I, I've been to all these sessions, and I didn't ask this question, so I should, but it, if, if we had, going back to the infill, the roughly 250,000 square feet, if we had that today, how much would that have contributed to the town's budget this year in terms of property tax revenue? Any, any idea?
That's a good question. It, it would be a lot, and it would help our ratio, too.
Well, that's kind of why, that's kind of why I asked the question, because it doesn't really generate a lot of additional cost burden for the town.
No.
But it does generate, and I'm just curious, of the 25, is it a million dollars, is it $2 million?
And, and that's a big reason for presenting this to the public, too, is to let the public know that we are working with plans and trying to get private partners to help us with our ratio, our residential-commercial ratio, to get that in balance, to help maintain taxes.
Well, I asked a similar question of our town manager, of the pending commercial development. If that was all built out today, how much extra tax revenue would it bring in? And he, I think he said about $90,000. So not a huge chunk, but, you know, there could be more, so.
Yeah, it's an every little bit kind of thing.
Yeah, one of the ways that we could get to that number, Jim, the Downtown Waxaw Association has to keep a building and business inventory every year, and we are looking at all of our properties in downtown, what they are currently assessed at, and then how much those downtown properties contribute to our, our town property tax. We actually have about 250,000 square feet of commercial in downtown right now. So we, what we could, when we get those numbers, we could say if that doubled, it would, it could bring about this much in revenue. We should, we're hoping to have that in the next six months, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, thank you. This has been very informative, and I appreciate Ashley and her team for putting this together, our consultants for all the hard work they did putting this together. Thank you.
I'll just reiterate, come see us tomorrow morning.
Yes.
8:30, Middle James. We'll have coffee and pastries, if I haven't mentioned that before.
Coffee and pastries.
Come hang out with us.
What more do you need in the morning? All righty, we'll move on to leadership reports. Any leaderships reports you want to share, Mr. Hicks?
Um, yeah, I'll just be brief. For those of you that don't know me, I was hired as the interim town manager on November the 1st. When I first talked to the mayor, he said, we'll need you about 90 days, probably. Well, for the last nine and a half months, I've been leaving Avery County at 5 o'clock in the morning on Tuesday, and leaving there at 5 o'clock on Thursday. When I first looked at maps, it said, you know, two and a half hours. On Tuesday morning, it's three to three and a half hours, and Thursday, when I leave, it's anywhere from three and a half to four hours. So I feel your pain when you're riding around Waxaw and, and, you know, and Charlotte and all that. But, um, this would be my last official meeting as manager for Waxaw. Your new manager starts August 25th. I will be here that Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, kind of bringing him up to date. I have maybe a couple of additional days if he needs me after that. But it has been a pleasure working with your staff. You have a very dedicated and very talented staff, and it has been a great pleasure working for them. It has been a pleasure working with most of the board members. I can't say all of them, but, but I do think you've made an excellent choice for your new manager. He has strong North Carolina ties, he has worked in the state, he's, he's got probably 30 years of experience, and I think he'll do, he'll do you a great job, and I think your future is bright, so just want to say thank you for the time I've spent here.
Thank you to you for all your hard work for Waxaw and for making the commute down here. Um, you. You've been a really invaluable resource for us. Your experience of being an interim in all of these different towns and just your long experience in general has been awesome. So, wish you all the best, and thank you very much.
And I'll just add to that. I have learned a tremendous amount from our interim town manager, Mr. Richard Hicks. He is a dictionary and an encyclopedia and Wikipedia and AI, all wrapped in one when it comes to running a town. His work with our budget this year was a really hard task. It was a, it was a big, a big project for him to take on as an interim manager. But I think he made fairly easy work of it. At least it looked easy from my seat, what do I know? But he did set, I think, a new standard for what a budget should look like, how it should be presented, and how it should be reviewed. I thank Richard Hicks for the amount of information he shared with us and the detail at which that was provided. It made it a lot easier in this seat to understand where the money's going and how it's being spent, so we can better control it and better manage our taxes and better manage your dollars. Things didn't necessarily go as planned this year, but we have a good footing. We have a good understanding of what we want to do next year. And our new town manager, Scott Datsun, comes with a lot of economic experience, a lot of money experience. So, we will be leveraging his experience as well. But I just want to say thank you, Mr. Hicks. You've been a blessing to the town and to me as well. So, I personally want to thank you for all your time and your effort. And I'm sorry it took more than 90 days.
And I'm going to echo the same. I mean, thank you really, you kind of saved us here without your experience. This, it was a rough budget cycle, but do what you did and come up with three different rates and really delve into them and really teach us what a budget looks like and the way the process should work. You can't put a price on that. And I guess it was meant to be that, you know, we found you or you found us. And thank you for your patience, and we couldn't have asked for anything more. And I truly appreciate your guidance. Thank you so much.
All righty, last item, Ms. Dina? Did you want to give a brief update?
Very brief. We have art, excuse me, music in the park on August the 22nd. It is a late-night special is our band for that night. And then, we have skate night coming up very soon. It will blink, and it's September, so be prepared for that. But I wanted to highlight also our ongoing programs. We're finishing up for our summer, because school starts on the 25th. So, be careful with all the little kiddos going back to school. But we were recognized twice in the North Carolina Recreational Magazine that comes out quarterly for the summer edition, for Cladoscope and for our mother-daughter, or mother-child disco night. So, it was really cool. So, I wanted to give out a shout-out to the staff that we were recognized twice in a state publication. That's it. Thank you.
Congratulations, staff. We'll go ahead and conclude this evening's meeting. Thank you all for attending, and sorry it didn't go the way we planned. Thank you.